Carry out the wishes of organ donors by working with donor alliance that would pass in our hospital. So it's a pretty important contract. It's actually required. And so we just getting another one across the finish line.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Breaker. Are there any questions from board members? This one's pretty straightforward, I feel like. I want to give any opportunity for questions.
I had one on the appendix A, how it has, you know, some specific things regarding like tissue donors. Is there not anything else specific to other types of like organ donations or?
Yeah, this is the the items that they called out that were relevant for our hospital.
Okay, so they would, these are the things that they would be able to get from donors from a hospital, like.
That's how, yep, that was my understanding.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions from the group?
I had, I've had one other one, I guess, in terms of who because it kind of spells out that, you know, we have somebody within our organization that is kind of heading this up. Do we already have somebody in mind for that or is that?
Yes, so Vicky Marshall within our nursing leadership will spearhead that. And there's some training obligations that we have to participate in and that they have to provide. So that way we're able to carry out that that patient's wishes.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any questions from anyone else in the group on the board?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the contract with donor alliance.
Okay, thank you, Kenda. We have a motion on the table.
I'll second.
Thank you, Taylor. We have a motion and a second. One last opportunity for any questions or concerns or discussion points. Okay, take that as a no and ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Greg. All right, get back to my screen here. Next item of business is a discussion of public health permanent location. As you're all aware, we had meetings with the commissioners yesterday and went through a presentation and gave them some options about permanent placement for public health per the transfer agreement that we signed back in 2022. And so I'd just like to open up some discussion for this group regarding those options that were laid out for the commissioners yesterday. And I don't, I'll just pull up if I can figure out here. Give me just a moment to get to the right screen and I will open the PowerPoint with those options so that you can see them. Oh, that's not what I wanted. Hang on. This is a little different on my laptop than my desktop. And so I'm trying to figure out how to share the right screen. Okay, can you all see my screen now with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Very good. Sorry, that took me a moment. Okay, so I kind of just want to walk through each of these and you guys should have the matrix that was provided to board members last week. Jan was working on attaching it again tonight, but if not, it should be in your diligence or in your email from last week with the different rec or the different requirements of the space. And all of the things that Lindsay and Greg went through and kind of worked up as far as pros and cons and, you know, if those spaces were able to meet the requirements. So if you want to reference those that during this discussion, that would be helpful, I think, for everyone. But again, I just want to have good discussion and I know we've had some, but let's kind of dive in. So with option number one, that would be to utilize the current facility where public health is currently housed and add to the spatial, their spatial needs by supplementing with space at the current sublet center after residents are moved to the new facility. So this is an option that we had discussed as being a possible option back when we signed the transfer agreement, but let's, let's discuss pros and cons. Anybody, anybody have any ideas about how they feel about this, this option?
Nobody wants to go first.
I know, I know, I know. It's kind of a hot potato at the moment, so.
I mean, I would say like, it sounds like they're fairly unhappy with that existing space. So I mean, I feel like we, you know, we've invested money in it. So on the one hand, it would be nice if, you know, they wanted to stay there. However, you know, if they're, if they're not happy there, then maybe that's not the best. And if we have to split, you know, where they're using space within existing sublet center, you know, maybe that's inconvenient for them. And then that also limits like, you know, what, what we could potentially do in the future with existing sublet centers. So those would be my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Ashley. This would definitely require some renovation as well.
Yeah.
And I know that's a, that's a stretch for us currently, so. I guess my question would be if there's not a ton of discussion, is this an option that anyone feels strongly we should push or not push, that's probably not the right word, but is this an option that we want to pursue any further?
I think we leave it on the table.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like until we know what they think and what the commissioners think, it's really hard for us to choose one of these options without knowing how public health feels.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. All right. That makes it hard to discuss the, the subsequent options then too. But I guess
Well, I think it could still be helpful, sorry, Madam Chair, but to kind of just go through them and, and discuss the pros and cons of each.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we're not going to make a decision, right? But.
No, no, we, we won't make any decisions tonight for sure. I did just want to have like, like I said, some good discussion about each one and its potential. So. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Kenda.
Well, yesterday Ken Kunecheck said something about he had some other ideas. Does anybody know what he was talking about? Like, when he got up and spoke, I was wondering what he was referring to, but had no idea.
No, I, I am not privy to any information there. I will tell you that Mayor Murdoch reached out to me on Monday night and offered up the possibility of some space at the town hall. They have some empty office space over there. And they have, I want to say seven to eight offices, maybe one or two more than that, but each office is only about a hundred to a hundred and fifty square feet. And so even all of their space combined, and then when you add in the need for restroom facilities and ADA compliant restroom facilities for patient care and that sort of thing. As I studied it, it just didn't seem like that would be a viable option for us. So I really appreciated his reaching out and trying to help us find solutions, but I don't think that the space would work for the requirements that are needed. So I don't know if anyone else has any ideas. I mean, this list certainly, this is what we came up with, you know, in a week's time whenever, after everything happened, but it certainly isn't comprehensive as to, you know, what other options are out there. So if anyone has any options or has spoken to Ken about the options that he referred to, I, I'm all ears.
Do we anticipate that the Veterans Affairs and Sanitarian would be housed in the same space again or still option to have those separated? Do we know any thoughts, desires or expectations on that?
I do not know specifically, Ashley. I think it was our hope when we signed the agreement that we could bring them all back together.
Back together, okay.
In, in one facility, so we're not paying rent on multiples. But don't know that Veteran Services is, isn't happy where they're at as well, or, you know, willing to move elsewhere. That is one place I thought we might be able to utilize the town's offer. Because their rent is lower than what we're paying currently.
Okay.
So might be a really good option for Veteran Services.
Does the list of required spaces, I assume it includes the space for those two functions as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't require that they're all on one property.
Right. Yep, understood.
Okay, any other thoughts here from anyone?
Just a question, Madam Chair.
Sure, Jamison.
So at this point, you know, if we're at a fork in the road of Public Health wants to be part of our campus or something separate from our campus, do we have an indication from them what, what their choice would be?
It has been strongly suggested to me that they do not want to be part of our campus.
So, so an option that would include some location and some space in the, in the Pinedale Clinic would currently, we would say would not be part of the discussion. Fair to say?
It's, it's fair to say perspective wise, I put it in there simply because it's the primary option that was sought by the commissioners at the time we signed the agreement and it remains the primary option per the agreement. Now, does it remain the option of the commissioners? I don't think so, Jamison. But if we go by the letter of the law in that agreement, that is why I left the Pinedale Clinic as an option.
Yeah, okay.
Does that help?
That's, 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 that's good. That helps frame it, right? And so so where they're located now, there is enough space there in that building to meet the additional requirements. That's, that's a fair statement, correct? So some additional remodeling and whatever other space they need included, they could remain where they're at. Do this need some more space? Is that fair to say?
Correct. I think that is a fair statement, yes.
Okay, so third question would be, and maybe this, you know, two years ago might have been financially viable, but because of the, the way the taxes are working now and the way large payers are paying overtime and the tax bills are coming in. Their, their number one selection, of course, would be a new facility that's somewhere else. Is that a fair statement to say?
Yes, I, I believe that's a correct assumption.
And so now, now we're in a point where interests are competing for the same money rather than having enough money to take care of all interests without, you know, without worrying. So.
Correct.
But from, from our perspective as a hospital district, right? So as we're approaching opening a hospital and the finances that it will take to, to get us to the point of critical access that we're, the same cash is, is the consideration for both of these things. And so I guess from our perspective, we can afford to, to build, produce a new space for them right now. And so I, I guess we can say that that's not a viable option. That's fair to say, right?
Yes, I think absolutely.
Okay, so then do we have, other than the location they're at now, is there any other location that could be remodeled that we are aware of that would meet their needs?
The existing sublet center, once residents are moved out, that was the discussion point. And then the other facility that we currently own that is rented to a private business. That one is probably the closest fit.
Okay. Does that meet the space requirement? That is big enough?
Yes, it does. That's option number four and that one, that one
Yeah.
does meet the space requirements with probable minimal renovation.
Some, some renovation, but not, but it wouldn't have to make an addition to it. We'd be able to fit it inside.
Correct, correct. Yes, and it most closely fits the needs outlined in the requirements of the transfer agreement.
Okay. That is very interesting. And it has, has a A and a B been presented to, I, I don't think we've had much, it's exchange with public health. It would be good if we could have a sit down with them and just say, hey, where are we at? You know, what, what, how are we going to make you happy?
Yeah, we, we tried that initially. That's kind of why we're here. That's when we thought we were having that conversation and then it turned into the commissioners withholding our reimbursement. So that's the conversation we thought we were having.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know if, if public health will be present at our meeting with the commissioners next Wednesday?
I do not know that, Ashley. I would typically assume that they would be, but they weren't there yesterday representing that I saw. I'm not sure that they weren't on teams, but I don't think they were in the room. So.
Madam Chair, is there a way to request them to be present?
Sure, I, I'm happy to send out an invitation. I would hope that they will be present. I, like I say, I'm just a little surprised that they weren't present yesterday. So, but I'm happy to invite them to be present. I, I would.
Madam Chair, Dr. Erin, Dr. Erin Hasty is on as well. Maybe she can answer that question, given that it was her comment yesterday.
Oh. Hi, Dr. Hasty.
Hello, it's good to be with you all. I, I unfortunately cannot answer that question. I don't really know what is, what is going through their minds at public health, but I, I, yeah, I would stand by what I shared in public comment yesterday that I would, I would really hope that Jana would, would come to next week's meeting and, you know, I, I just am, I'm so puzzled that this is, you know, that we are where we are with this situation. And I would love to see it come to a resolution. So I hope they show. And yeah, I think, I think reaching out and inviting would be a really good move.
Thank you for your comments and thanks for your comments yesterday. I thought they were very well timed and, and appropriate and appreciated. So thank you.
Of course.
I think we're all a little bit puzzled to some extent, so. Anyway. Jamison, did you, I, I'm not sure you were finished with your comments. You were kind of, you were still in that little thinking bubble, I feel like. Did you have more to add or?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm good, you know, kind of a couple of things to consider that I think are maybe dead end. So we, we don't need to spend time on those, but yeah, so it brings us to a place where okay, so wild idea, right? Could, could.
I like wild ideas.
Though, if the one space has enough space, maybe we could swap, swap a few things, right? You know, one entity go across the street and the other entity go across the street and maybe everybody can be happy.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have had some discussion. I think, I think we were missing you last time. We had some of that discussion early, Jamison, but we will have some further discussion in executive also about specific real estate, but I think you're, you're on the right track. I think those are things that have been weighing on all of our minds and what that might could look like. So.
Yeah.
So really good questions.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, and this is because I don't recall, I know we, we've agreed to provide the space. But are, are we now obligated to pay the power bill and the light bill and the gas bill and because county health is really a function and obligation that runs through statute and rests at, at the county level. So and then those are some of the questions that are coming to mind is, you know, we're working on a permanent solution is really what does this, this look like? We just, you know, are we obligated to provide the space or are we obligated to provide for the needs of public health, which I think is a bigger, it's a bigger thing.
Yeah, no, those are great questions, Jamison. Per the agreement, we are obligated to provide the space into perpetuity. That's the wording in the transfer agreement. We are not, however, obligated to provide utilities that you listed. However, I will tell you, as I mentioned in the public presentation yesterday, we have been paying for all of the utilities since they moved into the current facility. Simply because there is no separate meter and it's very, very difficult from what I understand to break out billing between that facility and this current sublet center. So we've just paid them. We've just taken care of it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, well, that, that
I can actually.
That's another wild thought, right?
There's, there's, there's a breakdown of the cost right there for you.
Okay. So sometimes government entities don't build or buy a building, they, they lease. Right? So like the BLM, for example, the building that's on the end of Pinedale out there isn't owned by the BLM. A private entity built that and then long term leased it to the BLM. I mean, that's, that's a, it would be an opportunity maybe for someone to provide a building that meets the needs and no one has to lay out the capital. But then we would, I guess we would end up with the agreement on the hook for whatever the lease is for a, a, a long period of time, but it would be an idea. I mean, it would be a, a permanent solution that would, that would work for a long time, but.
So we could add that to the potential options to present to the commission?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a viable one. And it, it's, it saves cash today and solves the problem and might work out. We'd have to explore it and, you know, maybe there's no one willing to even do that, but, but there might be.
Sure, sure. I'll add that to the list of current options, available options for when we sit down with the commissioners next week, for sure. The other option that Lindsay brought up actually is the building, I'm forgetting, I'm drawing a blank on the name. What's the name? The Jonah Building? That we had inquired about or, you know, that's actually kind of been sort of donated to us. But the moving costs are so high, I, I don't know that we would be in that any less than renovation. And we just don't have the land on which to place the building, I don't think, at this point in time. But that would be a great option if it weren't such a huge cost to move. So. Anybody else have any other ideas, other options they want to add to this list to present to the commission? Greg and Lindsay, I know you guys kind of explored the Pinedale Clinic space. And given that, that I know that that's not necessarily desirable to public health, however, it is the first terms of that agreement. And I still think to some extent, if we could meet that requirement, it, it would be an option to present and to present strongly. I don't know if you feel like that is still something that we could explore further. Space wise, have you guys had any more time to think about that or what that might look like?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think it's one of those things where we could, we could make it work. And that's where we still need clinic space then for our providers and it would essentially be trading spaces. We, we could easily go to the space that's currently utilized by public health, run our clinic out of that space and they would either consume most or, or a large piece of the current Pinedale Clinic.
Okay. All right, thank you, Greg. That certainly doesn't seem like the prime option for, for future business for us either, does it?
No, it's not. But I mean, that's where, if that's what the needs of the organization required, we could make it work. And we could easily make the, the current public health space work for a physician clinic.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Madam Chair, I just have one. Do we know if veterans and the other entities that were part, that were in the old public health building, are they going to be going into the new one? Are they going to stay where they're currently at?
Uh, that's what we were just talking about a few minutes ago, Taylor. We're not really entirely sure yet. I think the intent back when we shared or when we signed the transfer agreement was that we would house them all in perpetuity and that we just needed to make sure they had the space that they needed. And I think the hope was that we could have them all on one campus, but it's not necessarily a requirement.
Okay, but we ha, have we heard from those entities if they would like to go into the new space at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I don't think we've, I, I haven't reached out to them because we don't have the new space chosen. So I think they're pretty willing to go wherever. They were, they were very willing to accommodate whatever, wherever we needed them to go prior. And I actually don't even know, Lindsay, maybe you can answer this question. Does the sanitarians still keep an office publicly? Or does he just kind of work from home? Do you happen to know that? Because I don't know that off the top.
Yeah, we looked into our current real estate portfolio and did not see where a space had been previously allocated. So our assumption, we need to reach out to them, but our assumption is that they're working remote.
Okay, that's what I thought I had heard. And so I think in the current facility, it's just public health and prevention. If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Madam Chair, I agree.
And so. Okay, thank you both. I just wanted to see what the new building, if we've gotten any definitive answers from them directly, aside from public health.
No, and prevention, prevention typically works under or with public health pretty closely. So I think they'll, they'll remain with public health is my understanding, but. I'm sorry, some, yes.
With regard, with regards to Jamison's previous suggestion outside the box that there might be some third party interested in building a new facility and then going into a long term lease with the district. Any thoughts on or whether the commissioners may want to pursue that on using vacant land that we have south of the sublet center if they were wishing to or willing to pursue that option?
It's a good question. It's a good question.
It's a good, it's a good thought, Doc, because, you know, land is kind of a hurdle right now for any building project. And if we already had some land that was paid for, it's just going to make the cost of the building and the lease less.
Certainly. Something to think about. Especially if you're going to list that as an option.
Yep, thanks, Doc. Okay, any other thoughts? Team? Okay. I'm not sure what next week's meeting will look like entirely yet. I'll try to keep you guys informed as we make a plan for that, but I would come prepared for some healthy discussion. All right. I think, let me get out of here. Get back to my agenda. Okay. I think that's the end of our new business. Yes, that is the end of our new business. Our other business this evening is a couple of executive, uh, discussions. So unless anyone has any further points to make about the public health discussion, we will continue that next week. And I would ask for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of personnel issues, specifically executive personnel issues and real estate.
I would make a motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, executive personnel and real estate.
Thank you, Ashley.
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Thank you, Taylor. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of entering into executive session at this time, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?